I would ask that Vice President Zach lead us in the Pledge of Religions. Everybody rise and silence your cell phones, please.
Our Pledge of Religions to the flag of the United States of America. To two republics which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty just as for all.
Secretary Secora, would you give us the board affirmation statement?
Sure. Our mission is to empower all learners to be college and career ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as productive citizens.
To my left is Christine Walzak, replacing our normal attorney, John O'Driscoll, who is working on a different case this evening, but I'm sure she'll do a fine job for John. Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Consent agenda items. Correct? Oh, wait a minute. Yeah.
Yeah, this month we've got the school trust accounts, which were not in the packet for the August 12th meeting, so they were included here for your review. Just information. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, Gary? And just as a reminder, since we're talking about treasury funds, what have you, we'll be talking about the budget in the two more meetings, two more meetings, so put that on your, if you have questions, Gary, in the next 30 days, you might want to get those to him. Let's see, Dr. Mitchum, consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Quigley, I'd like to ask that the board approve consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-6. 6-1, board meeting minutes, 8:12-19. 6-2, executive session meeting minutes, 8:12-19. 6-3, gifts to Irene King Elementary School, J.R. Tibbet Elementary School, A. Beetle Martinez Middle School, and Bolingbrook High School. 6-4, trips for Bolingbrook High School and Brooks Middle School. 6-5, student activity contract for R.C. Hill Elementary School and Jamie McGee Elementary School with Follett Book Fair. And 6-6, resolution number 2001, authorizing Valley View to approve intervention in certain tax appeal cases.
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Secora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Student and staff recognition. I don't believe we have any, correct? I'd like to recognize all the students and staff and welcome them back to school. There we go. Yay. Liaison reports. Any and all from my left? Any and all from my right? Wow. Any audience participation moving down the, anybody who wishes to address the board this evening? Please step forward, state your name, where you're from, please.
Name's John.
No, no, you gotta go up to the microphone. And if you have something that requires us to get in touch with you, please give the clerk your information so we can contact. Go ahead.
My name's John Williams. I'm from Bolingbrook. I have two students in the district, relatively new students in the district. I have a preschooler that goes to the early childhood center and I have a kindergartner that just started at Independence Elementary. One of the things that I, that's become a concern for me and my wife, and you know, to be clear, we may be missing a piece of the puzzle because we're, this is our first rodeo with this, but the two schools, our youngest, he starts, he goes to ECC on the tuition-based program, and our kindergartner just started there, and we live too close to the school for transportation. We live maybe a block from Independence. The two schools start at the, essentially the same time, but they're 10 to 15 minutes apart from each other. So getting them to school on time has been a real challenge for us because my wife works early in the morning, I work night shift, I've gotta take my preschoolers to school, and then I've gotta somehow try and make it back to Independence in time to get my elementary student to school on time. And it's been really challenging. We've been taking advantage of the breakfast program that they have at Independence to make, to make it a little bit easier, but you know, I've talked with a couple of other parents that have kind of just started doing this, and I feel like I'm missing something here because it seems like all but an impossibility to pull it off, you know? And the weather's nice right now, and it's tough. I mean, we're, even with the breakfast program, I'm, I've got maybe five to 10 minutes on either side of this thing, and it's, it's a really, it makes for a really crazy and stressful morning, and I guess my concern with it is maybe the district would consider, you know, either providing transportation, transportation option for the tuition-based program at ECC, or potentially, you know, staggering the start times going forward in future years between the two schools because both the preschool and the elementary school require their parents to be there. My son's not old enough to walk home on his own, and you know, he's five, so I mean, it's just, I, like I said, I may be missing something, but you know, they have the reach program, but that's expensive. It's, you know, $150 a month at minimum, so it feels like, you know, you, a lot of money to cough up for what amounts to needing an extra 10 minutes or so. And you know, maybe just an extra 10 minutes, 15 minutes between the two schools' start time would make things easier.
I will, Jim, we can, it's logistics and Gary, I mean, we have our buses running on tight schedules, but I don't know about the option of making a bus available. That would be something different, but we can certainly talk.
It can pose a logistical issue as a result of the resources that we have to transport our kids and start times and end times, so they're very staggered. High school goes first, obviously, earliest, then middle, and then elementary and early childhood, so we'd have to talk with Dave Richards, the director of our transportation department, to see logistically if what you're asking is possible, and then as a senior administration, we'd have to have further conversation about that. Probably the easier route would be to explore the transportation for your child from Bolingbrook to Romeoville with the tuition-based program.
Right.
I think that would be something that would probably be a much easier solution than this, so if you can leave your contact information with Ms. Casey, I'll be sure to have conversation with Mr. Richards tomorrow to see what solutions we can offer so that you're not put in a position of having to go from one side of town to the other in a 10-minute timeframe to get your kids to school on time.
Right, so, and thank you. I appreciate it, but you know, like I said, it's something that, you know, I know that I'm not the only one. I've talked with a couple of other parents going to, at Independence, and they're trying to pull off the same, same kind of thing. So, you know, like I said, obviously, it's nothing that can be done now, but you know, maybe in future years, it's something that the district can consider about start time.
Well, there is a possibility, there could be something done now as well, so we will explore that option.
All right.
Now, and get back to you with what, what we come up with.
Okay.
I can't promise it can happen now, but it's clearly not outside the realm of possibility.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate.
Any other audience participation? Seeing none, hearing none, moving down the agenda. Student due process case A.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that the board approve student due process case A as presented.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Secora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Action item number 11. Ms. Kinder, I don't think we have anything, correct?
No report.
Mr. Gazafi, nothing for you. This is rare, I'm telling you. Human Resources, Ms. Nash.
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 13.1. This evening, we are seeking the board's approval on 26 items for certified personnel, 37 items for classified personnel, two items for classified administrative personnel, and one item for certified administrative personnel.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Secretary Secora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Who wants to talk about the pit filler?
I do have one other item.
Oh, you got a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Action Report 13.2. We are seeking your approval this evening for resolution number 2002, authorizing the dismissal of educational support personnel employees for reason other than reduction in force.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Secora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yep. Orchestra pit filler. Mr. Gazafi, I knew you'd be all over this.
Thank you. It is our intent to replace the existing canvas orchestra pit cover at Bolingbrook High with an orchestra pit in exchange, extension cover similar to the stage extension structure installed at Romeoville High a few years back. This is a more comprehensive and functional application of a pit filler stage extension system which can enhance performances functioning as a stage extension so that the performances could take advantage of the additional nine feet of thrust created at the front of the stage. The increased stage will allow for larger bands and choirs to perform and also enhance theatrical performances and musicals by giving students opportunities to explore other styles of theatrical space such as theater in the round. This assembly includes a series of posts and beams which support a platform which is all removable. The design would also include an added stage-edged lighting as required by school code. It is our intention to put this out for bids and bring those back to you for consideration at the September 23 board meeting.
Any questions? I have one, but I'll let others.
I do, too.
Go ahead.
What's gonna happen with those bars across the front now? Are they taking those out? Where's Mike? What? They're gonna be covered? Nice.
Okay. My question is, this has to be taken down and put up for each performance?
Only if, only if they wanted to incorporate that as part of the stage. Otherwise, it could be left out and used as the standard orchestra pit, as they do now.
So what is it?
Now, the only, they had a canvas cover, which was really just for safety.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah.
So, are we gonna have a open pit versus the bouncy thing that looks like a trampoline? The safety net is...
What I think they might be, what I think they might be planning to do for, like, musicals when the pit would be open is not opening the full pit, just opening up, you know, when you go to a performance in Chicago or somewhere, and you just see the director, just that little square is open, and the players will be underneath.
Performers are underneath.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So you're not gonna have that big hole, big ol' hole where somebody fell in once. We don't need that again.
Right, right. Well, that's what I'm, yeah, I was just trying to get to that kind of hole.
I know, as part of the work, again, there'll be some edge lighting as well as a safety rail, similar to something like you'd have here.
Right.
So that the...
And we haven't had any issues at Romeoville, correct, Mr. Kinder?
They have a pit cover.
Yeah, you have a pit cover, correct?
They have a pit cover.
All right, thank you. That answers my question. I don't want to see anybody fall in and get hurt. Next, high school course management, mental health and stress.
Yes, sir. This is information report 14.2. I'd like to invite several individuals up to the podium to give you an overview of the proposal this evening. We have two of our fine health educators, Ms. Corey Bassett and Ms. Heather Favalli, and they are forward-thinking and very dedicated to their craft, as you will see, and the proposal they're bringing tonight that's in direct response to student feedback as well as needs that we know are in great existence. So the course proposal is Mental Health and Stress Management, and I'd like to invite them up to the podium to speak. Ms. Tammy Khan, Director of CTE, has also been supporting them, and then Mr. Joe Infantino is also available to answer any questions. He's the administrator at Bolingbrook High School for Physical Education and Health. Tammy.
Thank you for having us here. I just want to move straight over to Heather Favalli to introduce the course to you.
Thanks, Tammy. Rachel, appreciate. First of all, on behalf of me, myself, and I, I appreciate no reports on some of that part of the agenda, 'cause I have an early bedtime. So, four o'clock wake-ups, you know, gotta treat this body well. Right, Dr. Mitchum?
Absolutely, Mrs. Favalli.
All right. And I appreciate you saying Favalli and not Tamali, so that's another thing.
Well, we go way back.
I know. You know, as a health educator, the greatest joy I have is, and I just shared this with my student, and I really don't like standing behind a podium. Can I just kind of move around?
Grab the mic.
Grab the mic. You should know my voice is loud. I, I have the, again, every teacher believes they teach the greatest subject, but the beauty of teaching health education is that it really puts me in the mindset that if I talk the talk, I better well walk the walk. And that is a very important part of what I do day in and day out, as does Corey, as do other health teachers. And when we delve into the issue of stress management, for example, you know, I'm not gonna be as bouncy as Dr. Paskevage up here, but I will rock around. Is he over here? Oh, there he is. Just a question. How many of you deal with stress every single day? Come on, show your hands. There you go. And of course, it's all positive, right?
No.
No negative?
Not negative.
Very good. We all deal with stress. The difference between your brain development and a child's, they don't have the coping skills. What they're hearing for the first time, or what they hear from us as health educators, they are hearing for the first time in terms of how to cope, because how they cope is Snapchat, Twitter, Facebook, oh, let me compare my life to everyone else. And we understand, that's not how any of us lived. That's not how we lived. In television, Atari, playing outside. Those were our stress relievers. And when it comes to stress management and the anxiety that these children experience day in, day out, today is Monday, last Wednesday, so we were, we weren't even a week, we were just a week into school. I had a student come up to me after my first period class, after the lesson. "Ms. Favalli, what do I do about my parents? I feel so overwhelmed by the pressures they're putting on me." And then he started to cry. I've only known this kid for five days. Now, I'm pleased to say that he felt comfortable and safe enough to do that, but it makes me sad that besides the resources that we have with our guidance counselors and social workers such as Jenna and other teachers, that they have that resource, but there's still a greater need. As you are very well aware, the students, they made their voices heard. When you have nearly 60% of students saying, "We want this, we need it," we need to listen to them. It's, it is so, you know, this is, I think, year 25 of teaching, and I feel like each year it is more emotionally draining because of what they are experiencing and go through. And I'm fortunate that I have a daughter that I am teaching these skills to at such a young age, and she's already a step ahead of them, but it makes me so sad for those kids who don't have that parental support, for the kids who can't reach out to people. We hear it on the news every single day, you read it in the newspaper. Mental health is all we ever hear about. That's all we ever hear about. What a greater opportunity for this school district to listen to these children. We always say, "We want to do best by these kids," so my question to you is this, are we gonna talk the talk and walk the walk? Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
My name is Corey Bassett, and I just wanted to explain a little bit about the process that we went through in developing this program. Shortly, the week after, the student came and expressed her concerns at the board meeting, Joe Infantino and I met with that student directly and to listen to her concerns, review her data, review all the items that she spoke about. We then took that information to all of the health teachers, and that's how we started developing this course. After we had an outline, we did meet with our support staff, our social workers, our guidance counselors, saying, "How can we help?" And so we brought in all that information, all that data, to develop this course to really address the needs of our students with stress management, coping strategies, advocacy strategies, so that we can prepare them for what's ahead. So, thank you. Does anyone have any questions that we can answer? I apologize.
I just want to say thank you guys for taking the initiative and really moving quickly with that student's concern, not even a year ago, six months ago even. So thank you for doing that.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you very much.
Moving down the agenda, legal services report, what you all came for?
Nothing to report.
AFT report.
AFT report.
Thank you. Valley View Council report.
AFT report.
Thank you. Valley View Office Personnel Council report. Apparently no report. Old business before the board. Any new business before the board? Questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? None of those. Any announcements by the board?
I don't have announcements. I just have a few comments. I want to thank all those two that shared that. That was heartfelt, and just bring me back to, I was talking to Assistant Superintendent Kendrick about that social, emotional learning. I feel that young man, too, and thank God that he felt comfortable enough to share his concerns, and I just thank God for Valley View because we are out, we're out in the front. We're the pioneers, as Dr. Mitchum says, and I actually work for Catholic Charities Head Start, early Head Start, so I deal with those six weeks to three-year-olds. But we were in the training last week and talking about pioneer... Well, we were in a training last weekend talking about pioneer, and we look on the...one of the videos talking about social-emotional, talking about the pyramid, which we're gonna be having here. And in that training that we were going through, who did I see? But at that time, Donna Nightlander and our own still with us, Tanya Williams. So, and I think I saw one of the other persons in there that also come over to Catholic Charities Head Start and working. So I am just grateful to be a part of this village that helps to be concerned 'cause there's nothing we can do without addressing all social-emotional learning. So hats off to you guys and to this district under the leadership of Dr. Mitchum and, uh, Assistant Superintendent Kendrick and all of this fabulous team.
Thank you, Liz. Just Member Peril?
On, uh, Sunday, October thirteenth, H2O, Hardhaven Outreach, is hosting their annual 5K. It's a cheesy pretzel 5K run or a one-mile fun walk. Um, they are doing what they've done for the past couple of years where if you get a team together and raise money, uh, you know, collect donations for, um, walking or pledges, whatever, that money can go back, directly back to, um, your school or a project at your school or whatever. The, um, registration fees for the event do go to H2O, but any pledges that you receive can go back to your school. Um, and I know there are several schools in our district who have, uh, done this in the past. And the only one...the one that I can think of the most, I think, is Woodview. I think that's how they, um, funded their Makerspace Lab when they first did it. So it's a...it's a great opportunity to get some extra money for your school.
Cheesy pretzel walk. You and I are cheesy pretzel walk guys. Are you gonna run?
Assistant Superintendent Kinder, but I think we have a plan.
She's gonna pick you up in a golf cart?
The plan doesn't include my running. I would say that.
You'll run the first mile and then take the golf cart.
It does include my participation, but not running.
Uh, anybody else? Deborah, tomorrow night or tomorrow, you wanna talk about the superintendent...yeah, just throw it out there.
Tomorrow, the Superintendent Search Committee will be here, um, starting at one fifteen to interview certain groups, and that is on our website. Mr. Blaney, is that correct? Yes.
Calling out today?
Yes, it went out today, and also the survey that you can take is also online, and Mr. Blaney sent that out um, so that you can go in and do the search or, uh, survey concerning the search for this new superintendent. But if you look at the times and dates, because there's different times for administration, for, um, yeah, for community...
Various working groups in the public.
Yeah, all the union stakeholders, everything. So please go online and check that, and please come out tomorrow and, um, do your interview with the search team. Thank you.
Uh, any announcements by the administration?
Um, yes. Dr. Tukalas, if you...if you could, I'd like you to give a very, very brief Cliff Notes version of, uh, the K5 growth, just what it is and how much we've outpaced the state. Just two sentences. Could you do that? We will have a formal report in October, but I think this is very good news. I'd like to just preempt the conversation in October with just our growth data, our aggregate growth data, K5, math and language arts. I know I am. Excuse me? I...I apologize, Mr. Herter. I apologize. I meant middle and high.
Thank you. I'm Adam Herter. I'm the executive director for our middle and high schools. Um, our middle school teams deserve a ton of credit, both our students, parents, the staff at our middle schools, the leaders in those buildings, as well as the people who work at the district office. Um, our preliminary, uh, data indicates that we are nearly ten percentage points above the state average in proficiency in both math and language arts in...at all, um, in the aggregate at our middle schools. We also have all of our middle schools, every...all five are above the state average in math, which is also the first time that has ever happened in Valley View as well. That ten-point number, if you think back to about two thousand and twelve, when we had the ISAT test, we were six to seven percents below the state average at that point for achievement. So in the span of this administration, including through last year, we've had growth over double digits for certain cohorts of students. Um, so that's an enormous celebration and something that the district should be very proud of, especially everyone at the middle school level. And I know they're very excited to formally present that to you later, but good news for now.
Good news indeed. Thank you. Um, I suppose Zach, I know...go ahead.
Okay. Friday, we had our finance committee, and some of the topic of conversation was some about our long-term debt. Um, most of you might realize that you've seen interest rates come down substantially over the course of the last year. Um, we do carry debt, and we're looking into it in order to refinance some of that long-term debt and take a lot of money off the table and put a lot of money into our pocketbooks by financing shorter-term debt with lower interest rates. So that will be coming in the near future.
And for those of you, if you're...were on the board long enough, we did this a few years back, uh, extended some debt because we...we saw that the interest rates were very low and very favorable, and we did that in an effort to save the district money. This is more or less the same thing. And anytime we can take advantage of the debt service that we have and lower those rates and, uh, you know, get a favorable rate of return and make, you know, five, ten, whatever, however many millions of dollars, we end up saving. That's a savings to the taxpayer, but it's also money that we can reinvest into the, uh, you know, into the buildings and what have you, or any other, depending on what the programs are. But, uh, it's just a good thing to be looking and forecasting for that. And, uh, kudos to Gary and his shop and Vic and, you know, everybody that kinda keeps an eye on this stuff. We all do it. We all...he and I are on the finance committee, but we keep an eye on these things. But we do, uh, indeed, uh, take that very seriously. Uh, and I would like to challenge any district to say that we're not good stewards of the people's property, the buildings, the grounds, everything that we do. This...these all belong...I mean, you've heard me preach this before, but this belongs to the community. And, uh, we take that very seriously. And we wanna make sure that, uh, and the money that we use, the millions of dollars that comes through this district every year, it all belongs to the community, too, and we're very conscientious of that. Uh, we are conscientious of your tax dollars. And, uh, you know, we just wanna make sure they're spent in the right places. And then when there's chances to save a few bucks or make a few bucks, we're certainly gonna do that. Uh, but it's not just something that just goes flying off the cuff. It's not done willy-nilly. It's done through a thoughtful process. And, uh, I would challenge anybody in any other district to say that their finances are as square as ours and for as long as we've had ours. And when...and when things were tough, we made tough decisions. And when things are a little easier, we're gonna make decisions that are still gonna be tough, but we're gonna do it conscientiously. So I wanna thank my fellow board members for that, but also Gary and your staff and Jim and everybody for that, all that, because it all kinda feeds together, so.
President Quigley, while we're speaking of finance committee, we lost a person who was on that. Can we go to those committees?
I...you know what? That is on me, and I did, uh, write down a bunch of things and I failed to give it to Shelley, but I will get that to you by the next meeting. So, uh, any announcements by the public? Hearing none, seeing none. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Member Campbell, seconded by Member Peril. All those who favor say aye. Pose the same sign. The ayes have it. Have a safe evening. Try to stay dry.